Is this your age?
You don't think that's my signature.
No, ma'am.
Crispy Critters.
He doesn't do a good job of it either.
Chris Cracker.
Let me call this regular meeting in the Little Rock City Council order. Ms. Whitby, would you please call the row?
Gibson.
It's present.
Yilding.
Here.
Dobbin.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
Bestel.
President.
Hite.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can I ask that we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Thomas, father, by the pledge by Alderman daughters?
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow in thy presence, again, we want to thank thee for all and many blessings of life. Thank thee for the opportunity that we have here this evening. We'd ask that things that we do be in accordance with thy will. These things I ask in Christ's name. Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
And seconded. Motion made and seconded on the previous meeting be approved and submitted on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Communications, let me, we only have a couple. Let me just go ahead and we got unless there's something that been added.
Number two, I want to, I want to hold to the public hearing.
I only see one communication. You got, have we got two?
Yes, sir. This one was from Alderman Gibson.
Okay, somehow I didn't get it.
You're not the clerk. When was this submitted? Like I said, you're not the clerk. On the sixteenth, a Tuesday at 8:04 PM.
It shows here, 8:15 by fax on the sixteenth.
This is the twenty-seventh.
I understand. Ms. Clerk, in fact, we're getting ready for Cleveland City Clerks Week, so I need to get one of those up to my office when it gets submitted. With that, let me, let me go ahead and there's one communication that has to do with speed control drive, excuse me, speed control device on Incas Drive, that's number one.
Motion accepted and filed.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
We're going to hold that item number two. Then let me go ahead and Ms. Whitby, I guess I can do this for you. You want to come over to the microphone?
Ms. Marshall's coming with me.
Ms. Marshall, we want you to. We all, we all know that, you know, that, that the first floor of City Hall is really what keeps things in order and, and we can't tell our clerks always how much we appreciate all of what you and Linda and, and Matty and Tina do, Diane, to help keep things going and flowing in, in city government. And I'm sure all of the City Council, as well as the community, will join me in telling you and your office how much we appreciate what you do. This is a week that we're setting aside, and I think it's being set aside all over the country, I would hope, certainly in Arkansas, to honor our city clerks and their offices and what they do. So if I could read this, whereas the office of city clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, whereas the office of city clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of city clerk provides a professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas city clerks have pledged to be ever faithful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. We want you to be a little favor to the mayor's office upstairs every once in a while. Whereas the city clerk serves, serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas city clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of city clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, province, county, and international professional organization. And I know you and Ms. Marshall, I know Ms. Marshall is a certified city clerk, and I know we're well on our way, well on our way. Whereas it most, is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of city clerk. Therefore, I, Patrick Hayes, Mayor of the City of Little Rock, do proclaim the week of April 28 through May 4 as City Clerk's Week and further extend our appreciation to our city clerks, Diane Whitby, Linda Marshall, Tina Eisen, and Matty Robbins, for the vital service they perform in their exemplary dedication to our community. Thank you very much. Uh-huh. Thanks to y'all. Thank you. All right. Y'all, all of us know that, that this is a political season and, and as such, you know, we, we want to welcome the candidates who want to come to our City Council and say hello to us. And I know that City Director Brad Kuzordt is running for another office. Brad, if you want to come to the microphone, as well as if there's any other candidates that are here that I may have overlooked, we'd like for you to come and say hello to us. And Brad, the microphone's yours.
Mayor, thank you very much. As we often say in Little Rock, that our City Council meetings are watched by a large and wide viewing audience, and I know yours are too, so I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come here. I am Brad Kuzordt. I'm in my sixth year serving on Little Rock City Council and currently the Vice Mayor of the City of Little Rock. But I am running for a different position for Circuit Judge for Pulaski and Perry County in the Seventh Division. This year, there's, I think, four contested judicial races, and you might need a scorecard to keep them all separate, but wanted to introduce myself and appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you for being with us, and we very much appreciate you and the board and the cooperative effort that we've had a chance to accomplish many things over the last several years and look forward to many more with whatever hats you have on. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank all of you.
We have a special call. Ms. Whitby, would you read the special call?
Yes, sir. This is a letter dated April 19, 2002, honorable members of the City Council regarding special council meeting. Dear members of the City Council, this is to advise that I have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM, April 22, 2002, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a real estate contract to purchase certain real property along Crystal Hill Road for the realignment of Crystal Hill Road appropriating $91,000. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a real estate contract for the acquisition of certain real property along Crystal Hill Road for the realignment of Crystal Hill Road. An ordinance vacating certain sections of Summers Avenue near Bethany Road and for other purposes, respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, and this is signed by all eight Aldermen.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Would you please read the first resolution?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a real estate contract to purchase certain real property along Crystal Hill Road for the realignment of Crystal Hill Road appropriating $91,000.
Repeat adoption.
I've got a question in regard. It wants, Ms. Stephanie, it comes from the sales tax money, but I, does it come from the bond issue or from the sales tax money?
Comes from the bond.
Okay, so it'll be the 2001 series.
Okay. That's my amendment.
You got that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Before, can I go ahead and get a motion to adopt as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Let me just kind of give you a brief explanation. Mr. Boles, you're here. My memory serves me, the appraisal for this, this is the Pfeiffer property, isn't it? Yeah, the appraisal came in for this in the neighborhood of about fifty-nine, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Is that right, Mr. Boles?
Yes, sir.
And, and so in keeping with my past practices, in order to resolve this, I added a 10% factor that added, I think, what, sixty in my math, this is maybe just a little bit off, sixty-four thousand dollars, I believe, sixty-five, sixty-six, something in that neighborhood. In negotiating with Mr. Pfeiffer, there is a, there is a road that is, that this council approved being built. When, when the Pfeiffer development came to the point where they could construct that road, and I think obviously Mr. Pfeiffer was waiting until he had a sale or sales that were in, in progress, or at least assured. We are in the process with this piece of real estate and an additional piece of real estate that's reflected in this special call, will be ready for the highway department to go to bid. They were ready to last bid letting, but because we didn't have this right of way resolved, they put it off until the next bid letting, which is coming out sometime within the next couple of months. And that's a multi-million dollar project that will have the widening of the overpass as well as the construction of roughly, I'd say, 60%, if I'm not mistaken, of Crystal Hill. I don't think it, is the entire Crystal Hill?
No, it's just the portion from the interchange. It'll be a rebuild of the interchange with two loop ramps and go across the field over towards Wild River Country, and that, that'll be phase one.
Phase one. So it'll get us over to Wild River Country, which is roughly 60% of that stretch through there, I think. So the part of what we were concerned about was that the highway department needs to approve their plans, and we've already had them changed once to where they have plans that the median that goes in front of Cook's Landing will be, ultimately will be closed. That was what the original design was. But because Mr. Pfeiffer was not planning to build that road at this point, we had an amendment that, that caused that median to be open because that road was, was then going to be open, and the alternate road that Mr. Pfeiffer is going to build would not have been available. Well, in, in recognizing that there would be a cost to this city if we did it differently, you know, I've negotiated a little bit of a various, variation on that agreement, and that is that we would basically add another $25,000 to that that would reflect by and large the cost of us having to reclose that if Mr. Pfeiffer would go forward and build that road now, which was in the neighborhood of about $300,000. And, and he, you know, he agreed to do that. In addition, at the same price per square foot that we are buying that property for, the highway department tells us that they don't believe they will need all of that property. In fact, maybe we'll receive a majority, and I've even heard some say we might receive all of this property that we're buying back after they finish their improvements. Part of the agreement is that Mr. Pfeiffer, upon our return of property from the highway department, will buy back at the same cost that we're spending for any of that overage. So, so we'll get, you know, maybe a good bid if not all of this, the chance, there is a chance that we'll get a good bid if not all of the $65,000 or thereabouts back when the highway department releases the land that they may not need. Now, one of the other things that Mr. Hot Pfeiffer's requested, and I told him I certainly didn't have a problem with that, and that is that when, you know, when he had a development on that front edge that would then be closed, Cook's Landing Road, which would then be closed, that, you know, that this city supported right in and right out from that business development, and I told him I certainly didn't have a problem with that. So subsequent to the council acting on this, this will be contained in a memorandum of understanding of that that I pretty well summarized to the council tonight. Is there any questions?
Yes.
It's mighty complicated.
Where's the document that says all that? I think it sounds good, but where, doesn't it need to be attached to this?
You know, I could, you know, I could, I mean, it's essentially a summation and, and I, you know, before I sign it, you know, and I think that, you know, if we want to go forward, we need to make sure the council's comfortable with it, and if we want to go forward, you know, then I would ask that the council adopt this, and then I'll reduce it to writing before I, before we close on this transaction and submit it to the council as a communication.
Before you close on the transaction?
Before I close on the second.
How about just submitting it to be approved before you close?
I will, let me just, what I'll do is I'll be happy to submit it. You can, you can file legislation to tell me not to, you know, if you don't like the agreement. But, you know, what I'm asking.
I think it's a good deal. I'm just trying to make sure that.
Well, again, it's going to take us a while to go forward and close it, and if, I'll submit that before we close it, and obviously I, you know, if, if anybody objects to closing it after they see the memorandum, then I'll be happy to sit on and tell you you're comfortable with it.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and second. Oh, I'm sorry, Tony, Alderman Bestel.
When is the estimated closing date? Do we know?
We don't have one right now. So I would imagine it'd probably be at least 45 days. How long does it take to close these things, Robert?
Are we talking buying the property?
Yes.
I would think about 45 days. Have to get your deed work in order. The state has prepared the legal documentation for a donation type, and we're in negotiation for the property now. The state is ready to go forward with building the roadway. It is the city's responsibility to obtain the right of way.
And they can't let the bids on it until we've done this?
That's correct.
That's, that's by and large correct, and, and yet, like I said, you know, this is a bit complicated, but I'll be happy to reduce it, and certainly if anybody has any concerns, you know, I think it's a real opportunity for us to, you know, have the best of several worlds.
And I, I think too that Mr. Pfeiffer's always been very fair with us, and I know it's very complicated, but that probably is the best we can get.
On the motion to adopt as amended.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you. Now let's go to the second special call item.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a real estate contract for the acquisition of certain real property along Crystal Hill Road for the realignment of Crystal Hill Road.
Move for adoption.
Second. And, and let me just mention this one, too. It's, it's also a little bit different than a straight out sale. The Chandler's are essentially donating the property to us, but not really. In exchange, the memorandum is attached to the back of that that reflects that, you know, we intend to do several things, one of which is to supply a certain amount of fill. We've got to do a little bit of that within the next two months, and, and then the remainder within one year. We envision being able to have a lot of that found at perhaps no cost, certainly minimal cost. Some of it might be done, some of that work might be done by our own street department. But if we had to contract the entire thing, you know, we would be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $130,000. We do not envision that. We envision something substantially less and think, how much of this right of way? It's a fairly significant amount, isn't it, Robert?
This is 10.8 acres.
10.8 acres, which is.
Lot of land that we're at from them.
So with that, I don't think we're asking for any amendments. On the motion.
Have we read that from you?
Have you read it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we have a motion and second.
All right, on the, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
There's one more.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have a call.
Yes.
This is an ordinance vacating certain section of Summers Avenue near Bethany Road. First reading.
Well. Mr. Mayor, I think most, most people probably don't even know where the street is. It's never been opened, and it's just north of Bethany Road there along the right of way of the, of the railroad track and also the, the length of the property Arkansas Air Homes there. So I'd like to move that route suspended and placed on second reading.
Is there a second to that motion? A second. On the, on the motion to suspend the rules, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
In ordinance vacating certain section of Summers Avenue near Bethany Road. Third and final reading.
Alderman.
I just want to make sure that we've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is on, on this. Even though the property's never been open, if it's been a dedicated road, there's some people that feel they have the rights to it. So did we, did we run the ads, the notices in the paper and do those kind of things?
You don't have to. There's three ways under state law that you can abandon a road. One's very tedious about having to do notices. So back my predecessor's term, we decided this is the most efficient way to abandon.
I'm thinking, it goes nowhere, I understand it. I'm, okay.
It ends up.
Next obvious question I always ask, are there any dedicated utility easements in this area?
Not if you want to preserve it, fine.
Put a paragraph in there, Paul, that reserves any easements that may be existing.
Existing utility easement.
Okay, he asked a question about if anybody been notified, and the city attorney says, well, you really don't have to, this is state law. But there are other people that own property up here, and are we going to get in a situation where they're going to come back later on and say, why didn't you build this road, or we want the road built? I just want to make sure everybody knows what's going on, will be in a situation kind of like we've been meeting today about. So that's all I ask. I mean, is that there, that the people past this point know what's going on, and maybe the people before this point, of course, that's at the corner of Bethany and Summers, but we're essentially. Access to these lots right here. Yeah.
Ten of our.
Our industrial park.
I was going to say, Ten of them is well aware, had no, no opposition at all, and the others, I think, has access other, other than up in Taylor Street, I think, they have to it.
And essentially, if we give up this, what are, what it's going to be done with this right of way?
It'll just become a part of Arkansas Air's property.
And then they'll probably build something on it.
I don't know if they'll, maybe, I don't know. He didn't ask, they didn't ask that, they just asked, since it was never used, could we close that street? And I said I'd be glad to present it.
I just want to make sure the people above them know in case something's ever done and they want to build a big industry there, that, and they say, well, you know, that's not a road anymore, or part of the road's gone where you turn the corner. That's all I'm trying to say.
Mayor.
There's a road.
I'm sorry, I'd like to ask a question about the exhibit, and I don't know if Robert, is that, is that you?
I'm me.
Okay, all right. All right. According to my memory, the property owner that abuts the existing public right of way can get up to half of that and only half.
Yes, by law, you split it down the middle. People on one side of the street automatically by law owns that half, people on the other side of the street automatically owns that.
Okay.
In this case, the railroad will own the northwest half, and I think Arkansas Air will own the southeast half of the street.
Okay, well, the exhibit really doesn't indicate that.
Well, I mean, it's just by law, automatically.
Okay.
Our exhibits have never demonstrated that, it's just automatic by law.
Okay, all right.
Got it. So they got, so is that access, that tighter road that goes up to the center?
Mm-hmm.
Those lots to the north of Arkansas Air Incorporated are, they're vacant?
Most.
They're undeveloped?
Yes, I think that'd be right. Mr. Adkins might be here, I don't know if he's here tonight, I don't guess he, he wasn't feeling well tonight, but.
I don't have any problem doing it, can I say that?
Sure.
I mean, if, if, if the people, if the business people above them know that's going to be done, and I think we need to make sure that they know what we're going to do.
I tell you what, Robert, if you want to notify them, let them know that we've, unless the council has an objection, you know, and if they have an objection, then I'll veto it. If not, then we'll just let it go, if that's okay with Alderman Thomas.
Be fine.
Just notify them tomorrow that we have, that the council acted and we closed that road, that if they have an objection to that closure, notify me and I'll veto it, and then we can address it again at the next council meeting. Does that sound okay? Oh, excuse me.
Certainly, Mayor, I have that amendment ready.
All right, would you go ahead and state the amendment?
Yeah, insert in the first section, after the comma where it says an ending three, 340 feet northwest, comma, then insert accept any existing utility easements, comma.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded amend on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Before we go to emergency clause, if we don't pass the emergency clause, when does it go into effect?
Sixty days.
Sixty days. I just want to make sure there's no hiccups.
What I was going to say, I'd like to have the emergency clause, but then the mayor, if he finds that someone objects to it.
He finds an objection between now and Friday. What if he can't get in touch with the property owners between now and Friday?
I think, I think part of the Catholic Church and any other, I'm not so sure who the other ones is, but I think we could easily get in touch with them.
I mean, I'd be happy, I think we can, but I, you know, whatever this council wants to do.
Let me ask a question, would, would May 1st be adequate time for you to ascertain the?
It's going to be before then if he's going to veto it, it's going to be in five days.
Has to be by Saturday noon or Saturday.
Saturday midnight close on, end of Saturday.
It really doesn't matter.
It's just whatever y'all want to do is fine with me.
Let's put the emergency on, do it.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Gibson.
All right, on the motion.
Yilding.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Before we go to emergency clause, if we don't pass the emergency clause, when does it go into effect?
Sixty days.
Sixty days. I just wanna make sure there's no hiccups.
What I was gonna say, I'd like to have the emergency clause, but then the mayor, if he finds that someone objects to it-
He finds an objection between now and Friday. What if he can't get in touch with the property owners between now and Friday?
I think, I think part of the Catholic Church and any other, I'm not so sure who the other ones is, but, so I think we could easily get in touch with them.
I mean, I'd be happy, I think we can, but I, you know, whatever this council wants to do.
Let me ask a question, would, would May 1st be adequate time for you to ascertain the-
It's gonna be before then, if he's gonna veto, it's gonna be in five days.
Has to be till by Saturday noon or-
Saturday midnight, close up, end of Saturday.
It really doesn't matter.
It's just whatever y'all wanna do is fine with me.
I see.
Let's put the emergency on, do it.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Gibson?
Alright, on the motion.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, special call, public hearing, downtown master street plan. I know that we've had that before, so I think there's some potential amendments. Alderman Gibson, I know you've been working on that, can I offer you the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. The, several of us met today with the Downtown Redevelopment Initiative and members of North Little Rock Planning Commission. We reviewed the concerns that were voiced by my letter, which was filed in communications, and we'll get into that in a minute. And we agreed, we hammered out an agreement as to the, to the actual amendments, not only to the Attachment A, but also to the ordinance itself, which we'll pass around amendment. The, we have two choices. We can file a complete new everything before the next meeting, or we can try to go in and amend the one we have now. And we will go through those. But, it's basically that the Downtown Redevelopment Initiative and Planning Commission agreed with the amendments that we suggested. I wanna thank them, I know they've worked two years on this project, and they wanted to see it to its fruition, and we've been able to do that. Also wanna thank Rick Halbert with Albert Steel and Kevin with, Kevin Couch with Mount Air, they were extremely helpful in getting us to where we are.
Pipe and Steel?
Halbert, Halbert Pipe and Steel, excuse me, I can't get all those words out. That's a long name, Rick. But anyway, I think we have an agreement that, that everybody is happy with now, and, but we have a public hearing going on, and so at the end of that public hearing, I'd like to accept and file this.
I'll tell you what, let's do, if the council does object, let's go ahead and bring that legislation up now, and discuss the amendments, and whatever you wanna do in terms of, you know, I think it probably would be good if we went ahead and amended this document, but yet still come back with a fresh document at the next-
And I believe there, maybe somebody else would like to speak on it too, Mayor.
Sure. Well, with that, before we, before we go into that approach, what we're gonna do, unless there is an objection, I don't hear any, and that is that, that we go ahead and bring the legislation up, and we'll just kinda combine the public hearing with the legislation, and then go ahead and, and discuss Alderman Gibson's amendments, amend it, and then bring back a fresh copy as amended for the next council meeting. Does that sound okay?
Well, it may sound really, it may get really complicated, because we amended it a couple of times last meeting, and now we've got a number of things, a number of changes that were made, and I'm not sure if we're gonna, I don't know, sure he's not, he's gonna be able to remember, and myself, exactly all those items that we, that we changed.
Twenty-eight amendments, Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we, maybe the best thing to do then is to go ahead, I didn't realize how many amendments there were, is to go ahead and discuss, I guess what I wanna, wanna try to avoid is to make sure that the public hearing is based on what we are intending to do, and-
Well, one thing we can do, Mayor, is continue the public hearing at the next meeting, is when we're actually-
And we intend to, we intend to do that. So, why don't, why don't we just go ahead and you discuss, if you would, Alderman, your amendments, and that way then we can have any comments that are made, or will be made based on what we are leaning toward actually doing, so that we don't waste anybody's comments against something that's already somewhat agreed to. So, can you address the-
We can address them, although this is the new, this is ninety percent of what the new one's gonna look like.
Well, maybe, let me just try it this way then. Since Rick and Kevin were a part of that, you know, maybe we can see what they might wanna comment on vis-à-vis the meeting today, and then see if anybody else wants to make any statements, and then we can go from there. How does that sound?
Okay.
Alderman Gibson?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Alright, with that, let me go ahead and open the public hearing on the downtown master plan. Alderman Gibson's introduced it. Does anybody in the audience have any comments that they wanna make at this time?
May please the council, Mayor, I'm Brian Rosenthal, on behalf of Mount Air. I'm here with Kevin Couch, who's the head of governmental affairs for Mount Air. We appreciate the opportunity that we had today. We were a participant at the DRI meeting. Mount Air has been an important and productive company in downtown North Little Rock since the 1920s. We believe that current industrial uses can coexist with further improvement in downtown North Little Rock. We appreciate the efforts of the council and the DRI to ensure that those uses can coexist. One point that we would like to make, and an issue that we're still looking at, is as far as improvement and maintenance, these downtown industrial uses that are currently in existence should be allowed to maintain their uses and improve them, and, so that they can stay in business and continue to contribute to the economy of North Little Rock.
We appreciate it. Microphones open.
Mayor and Alderman, I'm Rick Halbert, Albert Pipe and Steel. Really didn't come prepared to speak to anyone tonight. I had talked to Alderman Gibson and Alderman Witcher, excuse me, Witcher. They had told me what they were proposing to make as far as the changes and so forth to this downtown master plan. The one thing that really, I guess, bothered me the most, none of the business owners and landowners that were in our particular area, which is through this plan called Old Town, were notified prior to this master plan being voted on. I did receive word of it, got ahold of my Alderman, and they, they worked on it. They've been very good to talk with us on different issues. I know Martin Gibson has really worked real hard, Greg Yilding, Murray Witcher, several of the Aldermen, I don't mean to leave anyone out. I've talked to you yourself, Mayor, and I appreciate your time and efforts. I know that this is good for the city. The one thing, I would like the time, I just received this amendment tonight, so I would like the time this next two weeks prior to the next meeting to go over it and see if there's anything that I might say that might be detrimental to my business, the future of it, and so forth. But again, I would like to thank the Aldermen for all their hard work, and I will be back in two weeks after I review this and have any comments. But the things that, that I had received prior to this being done, and I wasn't aware that it was a public meeting today with the DIR, DRI, excuse me, and the city council, I didn't know that it was public, or I would have been at that one, I apologize. But I'll, I will come back in two weeks. But the things that I have read so far, as I've been able to sit here, I've deemed very, very good for the city.
What, what we'll, what we'll do is, is prior to filing deadline, which is Tuesday, prior to the meeting on Wednesday, we'll ensure that there'll be clean copies of the amendments. I assume that we'll deal with that in just a minute, and then you'll have a very clean copy to take a look at, Rick, from beginning to end.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask one question. Are you satisfied, should you wanna make some improvements, that you get a permit to do that? Are you satisfied with that? Is that in the-
Are you talking about the, the part where, if it's less than $2,500, that there's a $1?
No, no.
Or, that's, so far, that's the only thing that I've read that kind of bothers me. I did discuss this with one of the Aldermen, and I said, "Well, you know, our place of business," and I've got a picture on the wall in my office of my father standing down here in the gate on our pipe yard, and that was before the interstate went in. And I know that the feed mill has been here a lot longer than us. And the things that I saw in this original downtown master plan, it didn't look like I had a lot of future left as far as Albert Pipe and Steel. And I was assured, "Well, this is just a visionary, it's, it's just a vision, don't worry about it, you'll be grandfathered in." One of my comments to one of the city planners was, "If I decide to sell my business to a competitor," and he said, "Well, you wouldn't be able to do that." That's why I'm down here tonight, that's why, that I did get ahold of the Aldermen. As far as the existing, the question that you asked about the permits and so forth, I've got a little bit of a problem with the under $2,500 paying a $1 fee, because if that $1, if, let's just say that I needed to pour a small concrete pad just to be able to run a forklift another ten feet, and the city deemed that it wanted Albert Pipe and Steel out of the cultural entertainment district. Basically, under that, if they said, "Okay, Albert Pipe and Steel must comply and come up to every city code today that it has been grandfathered in under," then I would not be able to comply. One of the things states about no chain link fence, you know, it would be cost prohibitive to put a wrought iron fence and then completely enclose it. Curbing guttering all around my property, which is about a block and a half square, a little more. Sidewalks, changing the parking where there's no parking completely around the building and so forth. So it would be something that I, that I really need to take a look at. But this is also something that I feel like I can sit and talk to my Aldermen and work out. Did that answer your question?
Yes, I just wanna see if you were satisfied, that was the point I wanted.
Okay. Mayor, I thank you.
Thank you. Microphone's still open? Alright, why don't we go ahead and bring up the legislation?
Here's, I'm passing around the changes to the actual ordinance, which actually adds the new section to and deletes the old one.
Let me go ahead then, Ms. Whitby, while we're passing this around.
That's part of it, and the other one is to, is to submit this as the amendment.
Alright, Ms. Whitby, would you read O-27, O-227?
This is an ordinance adopting the North Little Rock downtown master plan.
Now, can I get a motion?
Well, it's already been on three rounds.
I know, I just-
Move that-
I just move for adoption, then, I'm not gonna, you know, move for adoption, there's a second?
Second.
Now, it's right, right for amendment, you move this amendment?
Put that amendment into the ordinance itself and this into amendment as exhibited.
Alright, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Alright, now we're in discussion. Alderman Gibson, and then Alderman Thomas, you got a question?
I guess, I thought maybe we were sensitive, this change is so great, you were gonna bring it back to clean ordinance to-
We are.
Well, we are. We're just gonna amend it tonight, and then, then I'll, I'll just leave it on the calendar and then bring back a clean one next time. So you're absolutely right.
One change in this piece of paper, gentlemen, is on page 17, delete the picture on the bottom of the page. That's not, that's-
Delete that picture?
Delete that picture. That plan is not even-
So you're moving to-
That's part of the-
Alright.
How's he? And we'll have a clean copy, there's, there is, 'cause I actually wanna vote on the clean copy.
That's fine.
There is some softened words in regard to, a statement that we spent quite a while on today about what the uses can be down there. We probably have not totally seen, but we will have a complete document, clean, clean ordinance.
Will this be?
Yeah, we'll have them, the complete book, prior to the next-
It'll be by, we're, we're gonna have it filed by filing deadline.
Yes.
So you moved a second, any other discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Whitby, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, now, now I'm gonna hold it. Mr. Suskey, would you please ensure that with my name as sponsor, that a completely clean ordinance be filed that reflects the amended version of what we just did, this amended?
A whole new ordinance filed?
Mm-hmm.
We'll do, Mayor.
Yeah, just with, with this, the existing O-227 as amended, clean, I want a brand-new ordinance.
You want it as a new ordinance with a new number, not the old?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine, that's what I would like to do.
Right, that's fine.
And then we, then we got, and we'll have a public hearing on that at the next meeting. So we're holding this. The next thing I want to accept and file, my communication number two at this point then.
Motion to accept and file communication number two, there's a second on that.
Yeah.
Question?
Uh, go ahead.
This, you're incorporated in this?
Yes.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item, ordinance O-219, Mayor Hayes.
Hold it.
Ordinance O-225, Alderman Yilding.
It's not back yet, is it?
It's back. It's not back from the Planning Commission?
Postponed.
Hold.
Ordinance O-226, Alderman Thomas and Berry.
Hold that, please.
Ordinance O-233, Alderman Bestel.
Hold that, please. And, you could add Alderman Berry as co-sponsor of that, at least, please.
Without objection? Let's go to new business.
Resolution O-252, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution appointing Skipper Polk to the unexpired term of Donna Hardcastle on the North Little Rock Airport Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yeah.
I don't know, he said he wanted it, was it pictures he had?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
We appreciate, General Polk is out in the audience with the-
Thank you, Mayor. I do have pictures of Greg.
With the, with the Black County Sheriff's Office, and we're proud to say, served many years as a police, the Police Department of North Little Rock, and we're glad to have you back in the official service of our family, even though you've never left as a resident. But we also appreciate your service to the county. Thank you. Next item?
Resolution O-253, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Ed Nelson to the sewer committee.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And Ed is out in the back row with Mr. Mills, and we appreciate his service, continued service, and you're still out in the legislature, aren't you? So we, we thank you for your residency, but we also thank you for your service to the state. Next item?
Resolution O-254, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Ron Oliver to the North Little Rock Library Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I think we got Mrs. Smith as our-
Osteen, yeah, nice to see you. I was about, sitting next to Mr. Rhodes, our Parks and Recreation Director, and we sure appreciate your service, and thank you very much for continuation. A lot of things going on in the parks, and we're proud of it, and thank you for your help. I didn't see Ron Oliver. If Ron's looking at home, we thank him too. Obviously, a lot of things going on in our library. If you go around, you'll see, you know, construction underway. Next item?
Resolution O-256, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance, and condemning said structures providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing?
Mayor, on this one, Code has informed me that this house has not have been torn down, so it can be withdrawn.
Alright, already torn down, withdrawn, it'll be withdrawn. Next item?
Resolution O-257, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance, and condemning said structures providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Alderman Yilding?
Uh, this is one on 217 West Fifth, and there is some work that if it's not done in the two weeks, I mean, I guarantee you, I mean, I'll, I'll be the one to help you bring it back up. But, there is some progress that, that may be made, and I went down there and I looked at the house, it is, it is secure. So, I mean, I'd be forgiving these people another two weeks, and then if they can't do it, then we'll go ahead and go with it.
Let me, let me go ahead and do what I need to do, and then I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Part of my requirement, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. City Attorney, is on this for public hearing. So, you know, without, without calling it for a vote, you know, let me just indicate that, that in accordance with our procedures, I'm calling a public hearing. Anybody wanna -is for public hearing, uh, so, you know, without, uh, without calling it for a vote, now, let me just indicate that, uh, that in accordance with our procedure, now, I'm calling a public hearing. Anybody wanna comment on 217 West Fifth Street? I'll take Alderman Yielding's comments as, uh, as already being made on that. Anyone else? Uh, with that, and, uh, and of course, with Alderman Yielding's comments, I'm gonna hold that till the next council meeting, and, you know, somebody needs to be here, uh, to let us know something, uh, Mr. Sykes, uh, you know, or we'll go forward to the next council meeting. Next item?
Resolution O-258, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance, and condemning said structures providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing on 600 West Twenty-Fifth Street. 600 West Twenty-Fifth Street Public Hearing's convened. Anyone wanna speak with regard to that address and this legislation, please come to the microphone. Uh, public hearing's adjourned, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Uh, motion made and seconded, that we adopt it, on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
Resolution O-259, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance, and condemning said structures providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing on 600 West Twenty-Fifth Street. 600 West Twenty-Fifth Street Public Hearing's convened. Anyone wanna speak with regard to that address and this legislation, please come to the microphone. Uh, public hearing's adjourned, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded, on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution O-260, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution to establish a collaborative regional effort for the redevelopment of the Junction Railroad, or the Junction Bridge with the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, Main Street Arjuna, the Plaski County Arkansas Quorum Court, and the appropriate county public facilities board.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution O-261, Mayor Hayes?
The, uh, the Junction Bridge is, uh, is, I've started calling it the Arena Bridge. Uh, the other one is the Library Bridge, which is the old Rock Island, I think is the way we normally refer to it.
Is it, it's the most eastern bridge, uh-
It's the most west, well, actually, it's the middle, middle of the three rail bridges. It's the one that's by the arena, it's not the abandoned one. Uh, on the R-261, uh, did you read that?
No, sir.
Okay, please do.
A resolution appropriating one hundred and five thousand dollars for local matching funds for design cost sharing for the North Little Rock Dark Hollow Flood Control Project.
Please call.
I think maybe Alderman Dobbin and Alderman, uh, Thomas would like to be co-sponsors.
Absolutely.
If you'd add them without objection, uh, and the motion by Alderman Dobbin, second by Alderman Thomas for the adoption of that, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
One step closer.
Give us, what is our next step now? We'd like to know what is the next step.
Robert, do you know, I know that they sent us, the Corps sent us that request for that, to go forward with, uh, with their design plans and, uh, and-
I guess we don't know.
They, they are moving ahead with the study, and they're asking for money.
Uh, I'll tell you what, we'll find out by the next council meeting, but they sent us a bill asking for a hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, so we're gonna, I hope they're doing something.
I saw that.
Next item?
Resolution O-262, Mayor Hayes?
Uh, and Robert, and Mike, uh, would y'all please check on what the Corps projects to do this year with that money, and, uh, report back, uh, to me prior to the next council meeting? Thanks. All right, uh, did you just read that one?
O-260. No, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the city of Little Rock and the Arkansas Department of Highway and Transportation to interconnect traffic signals between the two cities.
For adoption.
Second.
Alderman?
Can, can, can you do that? It's a long day.
I hope, I hope we can connect the flow. Most of our folks that live over here come from over, go back and forth, so that interconnect, I think, will benefit us as much as not more, uh, you know, it'll help move traffic on both sides, but I think it'll be a great benefit to us.
We had a switch on our side?
Assuming that you meant you were trying to signal so that they can move through, is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, uh-huh, that's it.
Mayor, my-
You hit the first one at sixty miles an hour, you can clear up the light.
Yeah, that's if you hit the first one, that's right. My, my question is, uh, who's gonna, what's a coordinating entity in this? Who, who, that's my, how do we coordinate this with traffic and, and others? Who's, who's a coordinating incident? Entity in this?
Well, actually, it would be, you know, well, it principally would be the Traffic Services Department of North Little Rock, Traffic Service Department of Little Rock, uh, would be the coordinating entity.
Yeah, but you're going up, you got two people trying to sit in the same seat as an overall project management of this, so- He's right. Where does the, where's, where's oversight at? I mean, one-
Right here in my office.
And then, I guess Mayor Daley will say the same thing. Uh, it won't be Mayor Daley, he don't have any, it'll be like the side carny or somebody. I mean, we really don't know who it would be in Little Rock.
Um, what this does, basically, is a monitor, it's a traffic monitoring mechanism. It does not actually give them authority to change our signaling. We still retain that authority, and likewise with Little Rock.
So we're paying a lot of money for it to monitor?
It, it, it will make the flow, um, of the traffic between the two cities much more efficient.
But you said, say it, all you're gonna do is monitor, but you're not gonna change the, the lights, I mean, I wanna know what we're doing with a million dollars.
You cannot change-
It's not a budget.
No, I mean-
You cannot, unless you're monitoring a situation, you do not, you cannot make adjustments to your flow by your signaling, and this, then this oper, and this agreement will allow them to do that.
Okay.
Mayor, question, please.
Alderman?
All right, so, so I am assuming then that the Little Rock Traffic Control Center, located on Broadway, will not be able to resynchronize lights during the normal flow of day?
That's my understanding.
Well, then-
Answer that question.
Then, then why are we doing this, then?
So that, that, well, hold off on it, then, and we'll do it next time.
Well, no, I mean, I don't, no, I-
Word, Mr. Marv.
He's not here.
No, he-
He's never here. We need, we need-
Uh, Marv, Mr. Marv will start being here, I assure you.
I asked you-
He can drive that dang truck over here.
All right.
I asked you, so I kinda know. When they do the study, they'll make suggestions, and we will change our synchronization of lights and match theirs when we're through with the study, and they won't be able to do it, but they got, they can't do it until they do the study, and then we would all have to agree to do the same thing.
I guarantee you, you get over with that bunch, you better have it in your hand.
Wait, 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 wait a minute. We're okay. All right, now, if, if, if you're not ready to vote on it, fine, I'll hold it, if you're ready to vote on it, let's vote.
I'm ready to vote on it, Mayor.
All right, I'm, uh, I got a motion?
Yes, sir, a motion and a second.
All right, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
I asked.
Dobbin?
I'm voting no.
Thomas?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
Resolution O-235, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the bid of Pierce Manufacturing for pumper apparatus for the North Little Rock Fire Department appropriating one hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Please call.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, we need an amendment?
Yes, I have the amendment.
All right.
Uh, in the blank, it needs to just say Capital Improvement Fund, that's it, according to the financial.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the amendment, Ms. Whitby on the amendment?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded on the amendment, Ms. Whitby on the amendment?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Quick question.
Sorry.
Okay, all right, is this unit going to Rose City?
This unit's going to Ten, Station Ten.
Ten, Ten in Rose City.
And it would be really, uh, good unit to be out there, to be just like the new one that was, went to Indian Hill Station, 'cause it's got a thousand gallon tank on it, and it will be sorely needed out there when they had to go to areas where they don't currently have water.
On the motion?
Mayor, one more question.
I'm sorry.
Chief, is it okay if Mr. Height and I go by and visit our new pumper at any meals?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll be there for you.
Okay.
Are you ready, Alderman?
Yes, sir.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Is he, was he, do you wanna ride the thing?
I wanna ride it. Do Bob Rosman, or what? I mean, what are you gonna do?
Gibson votes yes.
I wanna ride it.
Thank you.
This meeting is-
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, Resolution O-264, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract purchase real property from Eugene M. Pfeiffer III to be used by the North Little Rock Parks and Recreation Department.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we got an amendment?
Yes, Mayor, uh, I believe Alderman Gibson's passing around. It is a substituted contract, with the contract in, also a change in the resolution from the name. It's technically in the Pfeiffer Family Limited Partnership Number One, uh, and then the change is substitute the contract, has three changes. It has a closing date set under Paragraph Two. It adds that the city will put up a fence on, uh, three of the boundaries to the property, and then it adds in a, uh, Paragraph Eight under threat of condemnation that says that, uh, that this is, uh, done in lieu of possible condemnation by the city.
Would that be for tax purposes?
Yes. Affirmative.
Mayor, you got a question, I'm just trying, what's the location of this?
This is immediately, uh, west of the, uh, now western borderline of Burns Park.
Good, it'd be nice to have somewhere in there.
And why do we need it?
Excuse me?
And why do we need it?
Okay, uh, one of the things, Mr. Mills, is, uh, came to me, and we started losing that one soccer field yet, Mr. Mills?
Uh, they called us on my relocation, we had to relocate that, uh, location by, so no, the one, uh, field that we were gonna take had been closed home, and that would that point felt that there would be one field that was going to be needed this year that would reduce the current... Well, there are five fields back there, I believe, and indicated that one of those fields was going to be needed to expand their facilities this year. I just now am told that that will be put off for some period of time, but then also indicated to me that within the next three to five years, there was a very good probability that those fields would be needed to be reclaimed by the wastewater department. As we know, they have graciously allowed us to use those fields over the last four or five years. So at some point in the not-too-distant future, the wastewater facility will need those fields that are adjacent to their current facility in order to expand their operation. The current twelve-field complex is completed, and so for the near future, we'll have those availability of those fields, but in the not-too-distant future, they won't be. We have obtained a $70,000 grant from the State Department of Parks and Tourism, along with our capital improvement fund, hamburger tax fund that's in the department budget, to acquire 25 acres. The appraised value per acre is $10,500. The purchase price of these 25 acres is $7,500. So we feel like we've gotten a very good pocket price from Mr. Pfeiffer. In addition, the state has helped us with $70,000 grant to acquire this for expansion into that area when we need to utilize them for soccer fields. All right, with that, is there... Do we have a motion for the amendment? I don't think we have. Motion made and seconded by Alderman Yeling that the amendments be adopted. Any discussion, any further discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Do we have an amendment?
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance 0237, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Gibson, and Yeling.
Call it.
This is an ordinance setting forth the responsibilities of utilities used in public rights away for street or curb cuts, repealed in section 94-21 through section 94-54 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, amended in Article III of Chapter 94 of the North Little Rock Code. First reading.
Let's spin rules place on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance setting forth responsibilities of utilities used in public rights away for street or curb cuts, repealed in section 94-21 through section 94-54 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, amended in Article III of Chapter 94 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. Second reading.
Please spin the rules place on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance setting forth the responsibilities of utilities used in public rights away for street or curb cuts, repealed in section 94-21 through section 94-54 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, amended in Article III of Chapter 94 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. Third and final reading.
I have an amendment.
All right.
Okay, these are just some words. Instead of rate, it needs to say fee everywhere. Everywhere. Everywhere.
Rates, equal fee, okay?
I try it.
Section two, permit rate should be changed to permit fees?
Permit, permit, permit fees, yes.
Everywhere the rare rate appears needs to be the word fee.
I try it.
All right, that's one.
That's one. And the second thing, I have, in section A, section two A, it says multiply, it needs to say daily fee by two if the cut. Daily needs to go there. Also, daily on the la... in section A...
In front of the three.
Well, in front, yeah, in front of, in front of which is now fee, the daily...
Fee by...
Fee by three. And then also, the daily fee by 0.5 after, in the alley. And then in section B, the daily fee shall be multiplied by two. That's in the emerg... in the section with about the emergency cut.
Section two.
Section two B, second sentence, the daily fee shall be multiplied by two. So those are, those are my amendments at this time, and then we can discuss it.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Mayor, question?
I had a question too.
All right, Alderman, Thomas first.
No, go ahead.
All right, Alderman, Witcher?
All right, for clarification purposes, for the sponsors, if you would, this is applicable to all utilities.
All utilities.
Telephone?
Yep.
Sewer?
Tree.
Water?
Cable.
Cables, North Little Rock Electric?
Everybody.
Everyone.
Yes. Anybody that cuts our streets, yes. Or curbs, or behind the curb.
And now, the question I had, is the utilities had a chance to look at this, because I know we have to work with them. I had a terrible time getting the gas company to move some lines out in area when we're doing street work, and I want, I know we have to cooperate to an extent. Are they aware of what we're doing here?
I think so.
We filed it. They're aware of it.
Well, they're filing here, they may not have noticed that. I mean, they may not be aware of it here. I didn't know if copies they've been sent to them or not.
I don't, I haven't.
I haven't sent a copy to them.
I think it'd be a good idea.
What'd you say, Alderman Berry?
Because we have to work with those, those utilities.
We sent it to the PSC.
Well, the one thing, the one thing that, and I don't disagree with you, Alderman, but the one thing I know that we've run into some problems really getting their attention. There are several places in this city that one or more utilities have caused to languish in the work that we have to do, and this may be one good way to get their attention. So, you know, subject to obviously, you know, discussion, it would be my, it would be my feeling to go forward with it, and then that's one way to get their attention.
Of course, I'd like to tell them for the same reason that I know one street we have out in the Rose City area that we didn't do as good a job as we should have done, because we could not get the gas company to move the line. It was such a line, and they were not going to do it. So, so we had to build it. And it's not, not, the engineer said it wasn't as good as he would love, but he couldn't get them to move it. And so I know we'll have some of those problems with them in the future, too, that the telephone, the gas, people can move it their direction. So I'd still like to have them look at it and get their comment. We can still pass it.
Uh, Mr. Mills, just a second. Let me, let's finish, let the council.
Because I want to speak to them.
Alderman Witcher, I mean, excuse me, Alderman Vestal?
Alderman Thomas, I'm ready to go forward with this legislation, and I believe if they have any comments, they'll let us know when it comes time for them to need us to do work in our city.
No different than Little Rock. The only problem is, you may, there may be some streets that you won't be able to move because you, to do because you can't get the, the gas lines moved.
And we'll get them to.
Alderman, excuse me, Mr. Mills, you got comments?
Yes, sir, I do. I know you're all aware that, of what we do in this city, and it's, it's not on a contract basis like most of these utilities you're talking about. A lot of the work that we do is an emergency. We go and we cut a street because there's a line stopped or caved in, and we can't wait for one call oftentimes to come and then for a permit issue and that sort of thing. You may be unaware that, that, that the Street Department of Public Works helps us finish our street cuts. In other words, what we do is, we make our cut, we make our repair, we bring it up with, with washed rock all the way to the surface, and then the city actually paves those for us. So you're not running a risk with the sewer department not finishing a cut in the street. So we ask that we be given a waiver to this ordinance. I would have prepared some comment earlier, but I believe this ordinance was on the agenda last time and was not called, and my assumption was that it had not been changed from the previous ordinance, so I did not prepare to, to make comment to it, but, and didn't get a copy, so I've not read it.
Alderman Yeling?
That, that question will be really kind of moot, because in section six of this ordinance, we repeal sections 94-21 through 94-54 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, and at that point, the city of North Little Rock will no longer be fixing the streets for the sewer department and our central Arkansas water. So at that point, Mr. Ward can worry about fixing the streets and not worry about having a hundred, work orders down there to fix sewer cuts and water cuts. You'll have to get contractors to do that, and I, and I don't want any emergency clauses to be on here, so give you all the time, 60 days, to go ahead and, and get that going. So that's what section six does. Section six repeals that of previous ordinance that said that the city of North Little Rock will fit, will do the cuts. So... I believe that they have never fixed water cuts. Is that right? Yes, they fixed. You have in the past? I thought they had paid for those, either paid you or paid a contractor to do that, and they have always fixed that. Yeah, they, they, they pay to do it, but, I mean, what the rate is, the city's definitely not making anything on it, and, and, I mean, in fact, it's, we're losing money doing it, and, and in fact, we're losing money on the sewer department doing it. And the main thing is the service that, that Mr. Ward can give to the citizens on the streets. You know, there's a cut in Skyline Drive, the sewer department made it, and, and the deal is that the street department's going to fix it. It's been there for a month. I can show you cuts that have been there for two months. You've got to be able to get to it, and we've got to give him some relief, and so we can go and fix the things that we really need to fix, and so that's, that's what this does. So not only will you have to get permits, and if it's, and if it's emergency cuts, and Mike Smith, the city engineer, drew up this, you can go ahead and do it. It's no big deal. You go ahead and make an emergency cut, you just, within five days, you tell the city engineer that you did, that you did the cut, and that way he knows who, who made the cut, and, you know, why it was made, and everything's fine, and there's no, and there's no penalty or anything for that. So we've addressed emergency cuts, you know, in here. Is there a fee for the permit? If notice is not given, then there is, then there is a fee. So, you know, you have to, you have to give notice. You can't just go out and do it. And I'm not talking about sewer department, I ain't talking about the gas company. Go out and just make a cut and then leave, say, oh, well, that was an emergency, and never tell anybody who did it or why. And then, and then citizens are calling all the aldermen about problems in the street, and then we call the street department, and nobody knows who made the cut or what's going on. And there's also, you know, I don't want to get too much off track, but in the ordinance also, according to the colors that one call issues, you'll, when you do a cut, you'll put a little color there so we'll know who it was. And each utility will do that, according to their one-call colors. And also, and it's not the sewer department, but the water department, the new, the new water department, had the whole street cut on Pontiac, all the way across two lanes, closed the street, did not tell 911, did not tell the fire department. Nobody knew about it. I saw it. There were no decals on the truck, except for some construction company, so, you know, you really didn't know if it was the water department, the sewer department, or anybody. I called the city engineer, the city engineer goes up there, he didn't know who it was. Finally, you know, well, what are you doing? And the guy says, oh, I'm working for the central Arkansas water. Well, you know, stuff like that, we just can't have that. And like I said, it's not the sewer department, it's, it's mostly the gas company, and now beginning to be central Arkansas water, and we've got to deal with this. And, and the public wants us to deal with it, and definitely the street department does, so they don't get blamed, and they can't go out in Rose City and fix the street, because they've got to do 50 cuts that the sewer department and the central Arkansas water did. And, you know, and that's fine, not getting on you, because that's been the deal. But, but now has come a time that we've got to change it so we can work for the citizens of the, of the, of the city to get the streets fixed and get problems fixed. And that's, that's all this is about.
Let me, let me just add, let me just add this. You know, not hearing from Mr. Mills, I, you know, I was, was making assumption that, you know, that the wastewater department had, had some, did not have any concern about this. And, and we have worked well together over the last 10, 12, 13 years. And so, you know, while there may not always be an upfront consideration, there is usually a fair, equitable sharing of responsibilities between us and wastewater. And I wouldn't want to headlong go into anything without us making an effort to see what would be the most reasonable way for us to deal with our concerns. If we can't, then fine, I would, I would agree with it.
But we must be equitable and equal across the board.
Well, I agree. There is some difference between water, because it's a city-appointed board, or wastewater, rather, because it's a city-appointed board, totally within North Little Rock than there is any other of the utilities that we have, except obviously for electricity, which is this council. So, you know, I'm, I'm asking that the, as one of the sponsors, that we hold off until we have a chance to visit with wastewater, and at least allow them to have their input. Alderman Gibson?
Mr. Mills, when you make, obviously, the sewer department services in area outside the city of North Little Rock, you serve some areas, what happens when you make a curb, a cut in Sherwood?
We generally repair curb cuts ourselves, unless it's extensive, and then we contract those out.
Okay.
Sherwood has a permit system recently introduced, and we participate in that permit.
Okay. My concern has been one, we were up in front of Poplar Street School the other day, and there's a hump in the middle of the road. Have no clue who dug the hole and who filled it up, that high above the street. And so, Mr. Ward had to send a crew up there, spend several hours digging that back out, bring a crew in and reasphalt. This is happening all over the city, and we have no clue who they are that does them. We've got, we've got, we had a crew working down here behind McDonald's the other day, had the entire street torn up. Had a decal on the, had a decal on the truck. I stopped and asked the gentleman something, and I don't speak Spanish, and he spoke no English, so my next call was to, to Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith went down, and I should have called Cliff Hufman. But anyway, excuse me, excuse me. But, but anyway, Mike Smith went down there and determined they were working for the gas company. And, but, but they didn't know who, and it was a very difficult situation. We have got to do something, and we've had some projects, we've had some projects, us and, and water had a murderers' project up on, not murders, because it was all, one was about to kill each other, up on Ridge Road. And the fact that we found each other, had to sit down and negotiate, that we poured a brand-new 150-foot of curb, and the next morning, we go out there and our curb's gone. And they decided to take it up and didn't think they needed to put it back. Well, they did. But they did. But I don't want, Little Rock has a set of rules, Jacksonville has a set of rules, Sherwood has a set of rules, and North Little Rock's rules are antiquated, very much so. I'd like to see us bring ours up to be very similar to who the others are. And if you're, in essence, going back into Sherwood, and either fixing them yourself or contracting them done, I'd like that same consideration to be given to the city of North Little Rock, because Mr. Ward can barely keep up with the projects we're giving him without a tremendous amount of work orders showing up on an everyday basis because of curb cuts.
I believe I'll be correct in saying that, that we prepare curb cuts and curbs and gutters in North Little Rock. The things that Mr. Ward does for us are paving street cuts.
But you, what do you do in Sherwood on those? Do you pave them yourself? Have them paved?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And so I don't think we should be treated a lot different than that here. It, for, to go out and fix a, a street cut is, is expensive. It's expensive, and it, but it's more, it's not so much expensive in money and materials as it is in time of his crew to be able to get the job done that he's got to do. And, and I see them out, and we see them everywhere, but they're fixing, you know, squaring up holes and repairing them, and they've got a lot of other things they need to be doing also.
Well, like I said, let me...
If we want to, we can hold it if you want to, Mayor, that's fine.
Let me, let me visit with Mr. Mills and make sure I understand, you know, at least with regard to wastewater, you know, what kind of equitable sharing of responsibilities that we do, and if they're, if they're not equitable vis-à-vis things like Sherwood and others, then, then certainly that needs to be addressed. If they are, then maybe we ought to take a look at, at certain partnership arrangements. Alderman Thomas?
I think this is something we want to do, but I still feel that we ought to notify those that are affected, such as our, the gas company, the different companies, and let them have, be aware of, make their point note.
Mr., hold on just a second. Mr. Wolf, well, I'll tell you what, I think planning would be just as good to come out of it. Why don't you send a letter to the various utility representatives indicating, you know, send them a copy of this indicating that this council's discussing this, and if they want to have any input, they need to contact your office or my office, or be at council next council meeting. Alderman Barry, did you have anything?
Well, I would just say instead of sending it to all them, just send it to PSC. That's our job.
PSC doesn't regulate that part of it.
Yeah, I think we'd get it better by just sending it to the, the various utilities. So, you know, help make sure everyone's got a copy of that, Mr. Wolf, if you would, and let them know they need to talk to their council members or us, because this is what we're going to talk about, and maybe very well about the next council meeting. Alderman Height?
I just have a question for Alderman Yeling and Alderman Gibson. Does this, does this mirror Little Rock's?
Not, no. This, our, it's similar to what Little Rock and Sherwood does, but our city, our city engineer came up with our plan, of what we think is fair.
So these fees, these fees that you...
They're probably not as much as what...
Where'd you get those?
They're, they're probably not as much as what they are in Little Rock. I've got examples of them, if you want to...
They're only fees if they don't do it, aren't they?
That's right. Well, no, they're fees, they're fees, let's, let's say you're on a street cut, and you go, and you're going to do a street cut, and you know you're going to do it. So you're that water contractor that cut Pontiac in half for a couple of days, okay, and nobody could get through, and they closed the road. You'd have to pay $10, and if you did some work behind the curb, you would, that would be, you know, the rate would multiply by three. If you took five days to fix it, it'd be multiplied by four. And if you didn't give the, does not give the five-day notice, you know, you would multiply that by two, okay? And then, if you required the lane closure for one hour, it would end up costing you $44, okay? So, I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money. The main thing that we're talking about, you know, and then if you go to a, well, if you go on a residential street and you took nine days, you know, it's, it's $39 or something. So we're not talking about a lot of money. What we're talking about is some accountability and who's doing it. What we're talking about is the people over on Plainview Circle, that the gas company cut their streets and their curbs last November and hadn't fixed them today. We're talking about my driveway, which got cut in November, and they hadn't come back and fixed it yet. We're talking about people over on Ridge Road where they cut. We're talking about people over on Coronado Circle that they cut. I mean, this is ridiculous, and, and they all, and what we ought to do is pass this and let, give them five days, and if they say enough, then the American veto it.
Okay, one of the...
Do you want to ask another question?
No, not that. My last part of my first question is, is this going to require additional manpower from the city to hold these people accountable?
No, no. Mike and the secretary at the city, his engineer's office are going to be able to, to take care of, to take care of this. They would much rather take care of this than take care of what they're having to do now, and that's trying to fix every street in the city that the utilities tear up. Plus, trying to fix the ones that just need to be fixed, because they have potholes in them.
They've got a bunch of them.
Anybody else want to ask Alderman Yeling a question?
I hope not.
I do, too.
All right, now, now we're gonna, we're gonna, we've amended this, now we're gonna hold it till the next council meeting and submit it to the utilities for their comments, if any. Next item.
Next item is ordinance 0238, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance amended 2002 budget ordinance number 7417 to amend the Parks and Recreation Budget. First reading.
Let's spin rules, place on second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
An ordinance amended 2002 budget ordinance number 7417 to amend the Parks and Recreation Budget. Second reading.
Let's spin rules, place on third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amended 2002 budget ordinance number 7417 to amend the Parks and Recreation Budget. Third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Yeling?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Let me, let me point out some bad news and good news to all of us that are, certainly those of us here, know that, that is a $107,000 deficit that is contained in the Parks Budget. That's absent any raises that hopefully will be able to address pretty shortly. However, in speaking with Mr. Rose today, hamburger taxes are up, and, and so if that trend continues, this may very well either evaporate or be substantially reduced. So that's the good news. With that, any council member?
You touched on one of mine. I know that almost daily I get calls from the city employees as what's going to happen to our raises, and I, and I think you addressed part of that. You're going to see that some of them are saying maybe they have to join with the elimination of the, the tax on foods and medicine to recover some, so...
Well, that'd be, some of them would be losing their jobs if that happened.
But, but they're considering it.
Well, they won't have to worry about any salary increases, I can say that.
The other thing is, the asphalt plant, I, I really feel that we could save money if we could repair that plant and do a lot of the work. Some of the employees tell me that they many times have to go to Little Rock and other places to buy the asphalt, and even there, they can't sometimes be served, and they come back empty. So I just feel
So, uh, I just feel like that, uh, we ought to take a long, hard look at that. I know years ago, we looked at that, and I thought it was a, uh, a, a good project, something we could save money, and now I think we're, we're hiring other people to do those, a lot of that work, is that right?
Uh, all of that work, that asphalt plant is, uh, is, is done, at least from what Mr. Ward tells me, is, uh, is, at least that plant is, is pretty well cooked its last batch of asphalt, uh, that, you know, the, the cost to repair that nineteen-seventies, uh, uh, plant would be fairly significant, and then we would have a nineteen-seventies repaired plant, that if, uh, if we do, uh, start producing our own asphalt again, that it'd probably be best if we go out and buy a whole new plant. We're taking this year to try to take a look at whether or not contracting it, uh, out. I've been told all along, Alderman, and I assume that, that that's accurate, you know, that it costs us about the same to make it as it, uh, as it costs us, the cost of purchasing. The benefits of why we've kept making it is because we don't have to wait in line, uh, for, uh, acquiring that asphalt, as well as, uh, it's separately located where our plant is. Those are the two reasons, uh, we're trying to see this year if, uh, if those reasons would be worthwhile in, uh, going and buying a new plant, but everything anybody tells me is repairing that old one is just throwing good money after bad. So we're going to take this year, uh, to try to decide whether buying or, or, or asking the council for us to buy a new plant is the best interest of the city.
Would it not be possible that someone to, just give an estimate of repair at, at no cost? I think that we could have that done, uh, it is, uh.
Mr. Ward, I'm, you know, obviously, and I'll, I'll talk to him between now and then, but I, you know, based on what he's told me up to this point, I don't want a nineteen-seventies repaired plant. I think he's just throwing good money after bad, so I'm, I'm, you know, absent somebody telling me something different, and, you know, anybody's welcome to go out there and take a look, you know, but I don't want to use nineteen-seventy, uh, repairs, at least based on what I'm told.
Of course, I, I certainly am not qualified to do it, I was just trying to find somebody that, that's qualified to go out and look at that and give us a, a good.
If you know anybody, they can sure contact me or Mr. Ward, and we'll be happy to let them talk to us.
That's all.
Alderman, uh, Gobbins?
Uh, well, just want to inform everyone about an event that's coming to North Little Rock, it's going to be the, uh, Skills and Drills Football Count. Uh, it's going to take place, uh, June seventh, and registration deadline is May tenth, and that's going to be for boys, uh, age six through thirteen, it's going to have a number of, uh, pro football players in there, including Clint Sterner, and as well as Reggie Swinton, a couple of names pretty familiar with people around here, they're going to be out here at North Little Rock Old Main, excuse me, North Little Rock High Stadium, uh, and they're going to do skills and drills, I think it's going to be really important to get people, the youth involved, and, uh, there's a limited number of slots, so just get out there and, call five oh one, five four one six, um, seven zero zero six, and, uh, get more information on that, I think it's going to be a good event.
Alderman, uh, Yild- no, Gibson?
Mayor Wright, we really appreciate your, uh, presentation to the Secretary of Navy this morning.
Now, for those of us that weren't there this morning, I was introduced, uh, by, by, uh, the, uh, MC of the opportunity we had to, to greet the Secretary of the Navy at, uh, at our own riverfront Hilton, uh, as, as Mayor Wright, uh, and I told Senator Hutchinson